I suspect there's not much authority.
Same ones we've had. No, that didn't happen. That didn't happen.
Good trip, Peggy. How are you, Rich?
Not bad. How about yourself? Did you move the camera?
Well, this time it'll just all say back and forth.
You guys see, uh, several parts?
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
I'd like to call the Oglesby City Council Meeting to Order. Thank you. I'd like to call the Oglesby City Council Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Eunice.
Here.
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 Here. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first up, number four is public comment on agenda items only. That's actually a little surprising, but that's all right. Okay. Next item, number five, approved minutes from July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three city council meeting. Is there any questions, concerns, or modifications to that? If not, can I get a motion to approve, please?
Make a motion we approve the minutes from the July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three council meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Walberg.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolling.
Aye.
Aye. Number six, approved minutes from July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three executive session. Uh, these are pretty basic because we, all we did was just talk about which ones to release or which ones not to release. Any additions, comments, discussions on those?
Uh, yes, I have some comment on it. Uh, I know part of some of the stuff that we're gonna talk about later on in this meeting centers around the, uh, July fifth executive, uh, session minutes. And, uh, I, I think, in my opinion, I, I'm happy with everything that I said. I, I stand on my own words and I, I'm not opposed to releasing the audio of it. It's something that can be sent by email and done easily, so, yeah, whatever the council feels, I just say for my own part, I'm happy to release it.
Well, that, just keep in mind, that's not what's on the agenda, but if we wanna have a discussion about that, I don't have a problem with releasing the audio, but the concern I have is, and let me ask Pat this, if we were to release the dedicated audio of stuff like that, doesn't that mean we have to maintain it as like a audio file forever then?
Well, no, but for a certain period of time. It's not forever, but it's fairly long. And that depends on whether your systems have the ability to store all those, I guess, 'cause audio files take up a lot of room.
Well, this one's, I think, fifteen megabytes and it can be sent in the form of an attachment, so it'd be same as the PDF file. It can go in the same folder. It's something we're prepared to do and all I bring it up for is discussion.
I don't have any problems with you releasing them, but, um, you will have to store them.
But you, you don't think that's permanent, then?
No.
'Cause I know, I know like if-
There's a, there's a limitation. Do you know what it is?
Well, I wanna say there's a two-year limit-
Is it four years or?
Well, there's eighteen months when you don't release them. I'm not sure if it changes when you release them.
See, that's what I'm concerned about. If you release them-
I, I think it does, and I can easily find that answer for you. I just don't know it off the top.
'Cause I, I feel like I remember a part of this conversation when we talked about getting the video for, for everything, that if we were not gonna do it via, like, a Facebook feed, we would've been, had some kind of requirement to make some kind of database to where we have to maintain it forever.
No doubt about that.
And that was one of the concerns about that. So that's why I'm concerned if we approve something like that.
Well, as you say, that's not what's on the agenda tonight. You're just approving the minutes tonight. It would be, releasing them would be the subject of another motion at another meeting when it's on the agenda, I would suggest.
Could we, do you think we could find, I don't have a problem releasing it if it's not something we have to maintain forever, but I'd hate for all of a sudden, now there's one digital file that has to be maintained forever in our database that we're required to do.
Again, it's not on the agenda tonight to release it, so I think you can approve the minutes tonight, but it's gotta be on the agenda.
We'll, we'll discuss it later on, then.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, as far as the minutes executive session tonight, does anybody have seventy questions and concerns on those? If I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolling.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number seven, approved bills in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Walberg.
Aye.
Eunice. Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolling.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number eight, approve August fourth, twenty-twenty-three payroll in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and twelve cents.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Walberg.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolling.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number nine, uh, solicitor permit applications. First of all, do we have anybody here that wanted to make a presentation on any of the solicitor permit applications? Okay. So apparently, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Madam Clerk, but we, we got these over a period of a couple of weeks. There's one from Surf Internet, one from Southwestern Advantage, uh, one from IGSE Solar. They all have one each, and then Sunrun Installation Services has a total of nine individuals. And they all came within the last couple of weeks, and I believe their background checks came back all good. Okay, so the question I have here kind of is, and I'll open it to the floor, um, do, do we want to allow these, uh, solicitor permits? Even though they did all the stuff in the, uh, that, do we wanna allow these solicitor permits for people to be going door-to-door on products and things?
I personally don't, don't think anybody wants somebody knocking on their door left and right with this kind of thing. My position on it is that I'd be a no.
Okay.
I would be a yes to at least Surf Internet, because I think they, uh, went through the proper channels and are installing infrastructure in the city, and I just think it's fair to allow them to try to peddle their product.
I would agree on the Surf Internet as well, just because we have a franchise agreement with them that we authorize in the city. It'd be the same as like Comcast or something like that. Uh, any other thoughts or concerns on it?
I'll agree with the Surf Internet. The other ones, I feel that if you wanted solar systems, that's something you could do on your own. You don't need people banging on your door for the next couple of months or something, so.
And, and I suggested to Jason, we need to look at your ordinance, 'cause your ordinance may say that if they jump through the hoops and do everything right, you have to issue a permit. And you can't pick and choose who you want to be selling things to.
Should we table this, Pat? Do you have time to reset it?
Yeah, I think you could approve the Surf Internet one, because they're a franchisee with the city and, you know, they're out there to get those customers signed up.
So procedurally, can we do it so that we're just talking about Surf Internet?
Okay.
And just, just so you're fair, the Southwestern Advantage is educational products. I don't know if that means it's an encyclopedia salesman or, or, I don't know exactly what that is. Um, but, uh, but I, I do agree. I, I don't know if I like the idea of authorizing people, knocking on people's doors that they don't, they don't necessarily want. So if, and I, and I know I just sent the, the question to you today, so we probably didn't get a chance to get an answer on it back, so, so if everybody's good with that, why don't we look for a motion maybe to do Surf Internet?
I'm good with Surf Internet, but I think we need to find out the ordinance if everybody's jumping through.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not saying deny the other ones, maybe just-
Table.
Approve those, table the others, and then next one, when we find out for Surf, we'll, we'll get an answer. Does that sound fair, everybody?
I'll make, you, you want a motion, Jason?
Please, if you should.
I'll make a motion we approve Surf Internet to go door-to-door, but we table the rest of the requests until we find out how our ordinance reads.
And I'll second that.
All right, sounds good. Can I get a motion, please? Or, I mean, roll call, please. Sure.
Walberg.
Aye.
Eunice. Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolling.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. All right, the next one, ordinance number one-two-three-zero-dash-zero-eight-zero-two-three. Amends chapter two-point-oh-three to revise who has control over the city attorney. I did have something, uh, prepared here I wanted to read real quick. Um, so on this topic, before I open it to the floor for discussion, I will be brief. But the more important reason I have to speak now on the topic is because, under Robert's Rules of Order, once a topic is introduced to the floor and people have had the opportunity to speak on it, when someone gets the floor next, a motion to close the discussion is a legal motion to make. And at our last meeting, some did just that, because they no longer wanted this talked about specifically. In my opinion, the actions that some people have taken that has led up to this. Plus, I feel like the actual issue this motion is about was drowned out by the discussion of the police chief appointment matter. As elected officials, I know I've accepted that I am to be held accountable and need to answer the citizens of Oglesby for my actions and votes I make. I believe some of my colleagues up here have not come to terms with that yet, as they don't want some of their actions to be known to the public. There are a few things that qualify as being confidential, most being things with personnel, economic development, uh, collective bargaining negotiation, or items in a draft format. But none of them are things that deal with spending of tax dollars or modification of ordinances. While we did speak to this briefly at our last meeting, which wasn't on our regular night, and the discussion was, ended prematurely, on purpose, I did have one more example to give on why I thought there was value in the mayor still having some specific control over the attorneys. But since the discussion was closed and the motion was made for the new language, there really isn't any point in now explaining that. I also won't go into details on the other items, as I've already discussed them in our last meeting, including putting out what was in our released minutes, and because our meeting wasn't on a regular time, I also reiterated some of these points prior to the weekend on my own social media platform. I informed the commissioners ahead of time I'd be speaking on this and making a statement. There are some people upset that I brought items already public information to the forefront of my social media page. However, no one had anything to say against the information not being accurate and true. Their disagreement was on the fact that it was being put out to the public and attempts were made by others that enjoy spinning up drama, that it was in poor taste to inform people of these items. I would completely disagree. I ran on the idea of complete transparency, and this is one of the core commitments I will continue to have to everyone here. Any item that doesn't fit in the box of being an authorized confidential item that I'm going to, I am going to use the means and authority granted to me to make sure these people are aware of things, especially if I think those things are going to impact the city significantly or not give residents the opportunity to voice concerns. I will refuse to stand by and be a spectator of people taking actions that affect the city that some people don't want the public to know about. If you, if you feel confident on your actions that you take for the city, then in no way should anyone be upset when those actions are put out to the public to make anyone aware. I know for one, I can stand by every vote or action I've ever taken within the city and can defend it no matter if it's popular or not. I know that some are attempting to say that the mayor is trying to be the gatekeeper or handcuffing others not to get legal counsel, that it restricts them from getting their information needed to do their jobs. However, that is far from the truth. I even stated in the last meeting, it was never an intention to stop people from getting answers to questions. It was to ensure that no one was going to be taking actions or spending money to generate products that the council or the public aren't aware of. Even the attorney here himself confirmed that they could easily get their questions still answered. As a commissioner for the previous four years, I'm well aware of the need to get information on various legal stuff from the attorney. Every time I had work that needed to be done with the city attorney, our mayor was always informed, not only as a sign of respect, but that I always had the mayor informed of some items going on in my departments. In the past two weeks, I even offered some compromise language such as to move their wording under the council authority like they are already planning that essentially says the council shall have overall control and authority of the attorneys. That way, you make it clear on the authority supersedes anything the mayor has. But, under the mayor's authority on the attorneys, simply take out the word "control." That way, the mayor could still have the opportunity to prevent unknown actions from outside the council on things until at least a council meeting. Their response to that compromise was no discussion on it, just, nope, can't do it. I asked the council to not change language we've had in place for decades, because there is value in having it there, and in no way limits their ability to do their duties as commissioners. Let me reiterate that this is something that, that hasn't just come up the last week or two. During this time, your councils continue to work together, conduct city business, and essentially run everything effectively. You have elected people that are determined and hard-charging on items in their departments. My statement over the weekend was to get information out there, not to attack any specific individual. I know there are a handful of people that wanna make drama out of this item, as they can't focus on the message, just the messenger. As I said, either way of a vote, we are still going to keep things professional moving forward. All right, that's all I have to say. Um, anybody have any discussion on it that'd like to bring on?
Uh, I have nothing. I think I said my part about it last meeting. I don't, I don't have to give a prepared speech or anything like that. I look forward to an up or down vote here.
Okay, anybody else?
I don't like the fact that you're saying that we're trying to hide something. I don't agree with that at all. Um, I think it's disrespectful. I don't believe that that's the full truth.
Okay.
Uh, I'll address the, the Facebook post later on in new business to be respectful to the residents and, and this process.
Okay, any other topics on the question, or the topic at all?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, I wanna make sure that nobody's had any more questions on it. Everybody's had an opportunity to speak? If so, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Walberg.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolling.
Aye.
Kern.
No. Number eleven, road closure request submitted by Angela Partridge on behalf of Bulldogs Bar. Let me see if I have the date here again. You have it there? Thanks. Looks like, uh, on behalf of Bulldogs Bar, I'd like to request a closure on Glen Avenue from Walnut South of the Alley on Friday, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, four-thirty PM to eleven-fifty-nine PM. I have no issues with that. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments on the topic? Well, if anybody doesn't have any issues with it, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Roll call, I'm sorry, roll call.
Walberg.
Epstein.
Eunice.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolling.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Okay, next is number twelve, place on file Plan Commission recommendation for street, uh, vacation request. I think the way we have it written up here, isn't it just all the minutes of the, of their meeting? Is that what you kinda gave me, I thought? Um, all right, uh, anybody's got any questions or concerns on it? I'll entertain a motion to place on file the commission, the Plan Commission's recommendation.
I don't think I have anything in my packet. Is there anything distributed? Oh, it's in front of me.
It loo, it looks very similar to all the, uh, the minutes of the other items, basically.
Okay, I got it. There it is, okay.
They had essentially, the one motion they had was to deny the request for the, uh, what was it?
The Lemurize.
The Lemurize Building.
Street vacation. Their property faces swift, the side of their house is on Bennett. They asked that, uh, a couple of lots there be vacated of that block, so he says he hates the grass and everything all the time. The problem is, there are two parties on the west side of the road that border that block. They will be landlocked if the street's vacated, even though they don't use it now. You know, it's a dedicated street and you can't landlock parcels. It's illegal, so. Uh, the recommendation of the Plan Commission was to deny it, and you have that request later on your list. To, you, you, the council has to take action on it, either to formally approve it or deny it. And the commission's recommendation, which is what you're considering now, to place on file is just to deny.
Okay.
So this is the first step in the two-step process.
Place it on file, and the next one would be to deny the request, I imagine.
If that's what the council wants.
I'll make a motion to place on file.
And I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Walberg.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolling.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number thirteen, Lemurize Street Vacation Request, and I believe if we take the, uh, recommendation of them, it is going to be to motion to deny the, the request. Uh, if there's any questions, concerns on it, if not, if I can get a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Walberg.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolling.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number fourteen, hiring of a full-time administrative assistant for the police department. In here, I see a, uh, a, a good job description that's been written up. It looks very detailed. Um, Commissioner Hughes, did you wanna talk about this at all or anything?
Yes, so we no longer have the need really for a dispatcher, which, um, the person holding that position, uh, just retired and left through, it's opened through attrition. We'd like to redefine that role to make it an administrative assistant instead of a dispatcher, 'cause that better suits our needs at the police department. My vision for this is to have it start at nineteen dollars per hour. After three months, if there, this individual is able to do all of the, um, job description here and multitask, if you will, I'd like to see it go up to twenty dollars an hour. After one year, I'd like it to go to twenty-two dollars per hour, and I'd like the benefits and the COLAs consistent with the FOP, FOP labor contract. This would start as a non-union position.
Okay.
So I, I think we'd have to prepare an ordinance, Pat.
We do.
To define this, so this is, basically, I, I, I'm looking to make a motion to send it to Pat so we can draw up the ordinance to approve this position. And, uh, the person taking this role, my recommendation would be Lori Ambrose, who's been filling the part-time position, um, that was open.
I, I know, Commissioner Hughes and I talked about this a little bit, and there's really two ways to kind of, uh, to do this. If we wanted to go straight to the full-time position, we would obviously need an ordinance to do that. The other thing, and even if we don't decide to do this now, we probably do need to do it, but before the end of the year, um, how that person is hired right now, there is an ordinance from twenty-eighteen that allows the, the various council members to hire part-time people. But there's a limit there of what they can only go up to seventeen dollars an hour. Obviously, beginning of next year, minimum wage is changing quite a bit. This thing was done up when, I think, minimum wage was, um, looks like eleven-ninety-six, back in twenty-seventeen, almost. So times have changed a little bit. I, I, you know, if, if we're gonna go straight to the full-time, that's probably not a big deal. We should just do the separate ordinance. But either way, I think at some point in time before the first of the year, we need to probably update this. Otherwise, January hits, everybody has a two-dollar window range of what they can do for their part-time employees, is it?
Can we put it on the agenda for the next meeting? Is there a problem with that?
Any concerns about getting the ordinance done in time?
Well, I, I haven't seen what, Terry, you're gonna send me something about, you know, the, the wage structure you just talked about?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem getting it done.
Pat, what I was referring to is, um, the part-time employees, of what the marriage is called to. Is that something that we wanna discuss sooner rather than later? I, I don't think we're-
I don't think that's a bad idea, and I think it would be good to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, so you can talk about it.
Do we need official action to do that? Or is this something we can all agree on right now?
Well, n- now you would technically, because of what you just approved, you would technically need a vote, but I, I think it's, I think as long as we do the action in the council here-
I think Tony is just asking you to make sure you don't have any problem putting it on the agenda for discussion the next day.
I have no-
That's exactly correct, Pat.
I have no problem. Well, I mean, we already discussed it here, so I think if, if we wanna go the route of going straight to the full-time, we just-
I just got a question. Terry, are you, are you wanting him to write something up for a full-time?
Yes, this, this, so these are two separate issues. We're talking about Max, so, uh, what I was talking about is a full-time position within the police department. Um, that, that position was left open through attrition. We've changed the job description.
Correct.
But we need to have somebody there to be at the window during business hours, and that's part of our contract also with Valcom.
But with this here, you're wanting to ask for a full-time position, you're wanting Barry to write something up for the next year.
Yeah, there has to be an ordinance in order, in order for us to hire that full-time person.
Correct.
But what Jason's talking about is we're kind of, uh, outdated with our part-time, um, personnel. We're, we can only go up to seventeen dollars an hour. Uh, we kinda talked, I, I'd be, you know, in favor of going up to like nineteen dollars an hour, just so we have more flexibility. Not that we have to pay somebody that, but it gives us more flexibility when we're hiring within our departments.
And you're looking for a full-time employee at nineteen dollars an hour?
Well, starting at nineteen, going to twenty after three months, if she can perform all the duties in the job description, then after one year, going to twenty-two dollars an hour. And then the, the COLAs, the cost of living adjustments would be, and benefits would be consistent with the FOP contract.
So is it necessary to write or discuss ne- next meeting if we want a part-timer for this position?
Well, we don't, we don't want part-time. They're two totally separate.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
We have to wait. We don't have that on the agenda.
Man, what I was, what I was referring to is a separate ordinance. What Terry, what Terry's got, Pat said that he could draft for the next meeting. That takes care of the police department employee. What I'm talking about is just for part-time employees in general moving forward after that. And that's what I'd like to discuss at the next meeting.
And focus on what we're actually voting on and coming up with.
I'm sorry, if I, if I brought the confusion with that, the reason I brought it up is because they're currently hired under the part-time agreement thing that we have right now. So that's why I was talking. If we wanted to keep them part-time for a period of time, we could modify this thing sooner. But if we're gonna go straight to the full-time, it doesn't really play a factor.
Right.
I just think we need to get that other ordinance before the end of the year, is what I was saying. So, um-
So do you need a motion, Jason?
Why don't we just, why don't we just do that, then? Just make a motion to, uh, to, to draft a full-time, uh, contract for the, for the new position?
I'll make a motion we draft and have, uh, Attorney Barry draft an ordinance for the hiring of Lori Ambrose at the rate structure of starting nineteen dollars an hour, three months, twenty dollars an hour. After a year, twenty-two dollars an hour, and the benefits and the, um, COLAs consistent with the FOP contract.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Walberg.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolling.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number fifteen, adding IMRF eligible employees to the Oglesby ambulance service. Um, so Commissioner Hughes and I talked about this one as well. If you look in your packets, I remember this from a while ago. Back in twenty of twenty, we extended to, to make things a little bit easier for our ambulance director. We extended three employees to allow them to go over a thousand hours of IMRS, but, but under eighteen-hundred hours. Um, at the time, I don't think we had an ambulance board. If you look at our, uh, ordinances, it does say that if we're gonna make new ordinances that are affecting the ambulance service or something like that, we're supposed to go through the ambulance board, so, um, I'm, I'm not sure where we're at on that, but I'm almost recommending that if, if we have something that we want to extend on that, we, we'd send it to the ambulance board. Did you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I think my question is, I wanted Pat's opinion. Is that something we have to do, Pat? Do we have to send that to the ambulance board? 'Cause Jason quoted me something that says we shall, and I don't think that the ambulance, what I, I, I view them as an advisory board, and that our action trumps anything that they're gonna do anyways, so we're in a bad way right now within our department. We had Kathy work in a hundred and ninety-eight hours during an eight-hour work week, two-week period, this last pay period. We can't continue that on her. We're, we're gonna be in big trouble, and it's not safe.
Mm-hmm.
So I really think this is a pressing matter, and I think it's in the best interest of, of that department and the citizens to move that forward tonight, if, if possible.
Yeah, I, I don't know what Jason showed you that said shall, but shall is mandatory, you know? It, it says you have to.
Yeah.
So I think you need to refer to them, if that's what that says, and then take their opinion and decide what you wanna do, 'cause you're the ultimate authority.
I do wanna make sure that we're, we're utilizing our boards to our full potentials, obviously, 'cause that was one of the concerns that, that, that people had said that we didn't in the past, but, um, I mean, if this, I, I didn't know if, if it's that pressing, if it's that pressing.
It's, it's not good, Jason. It, it's not good. Right now, ju- just to kinda summarize here, we have three IMRF employees, like you stated, Jason. We have Ron Paparella, um, Pete, um, I forget how to say his last name, Rupidszki, that's it, and Dusty Shan. Um, what's, what's really crippling us is when Saint Margaret's Peru closed, um, we had to switch EMS systems. So the medical direction, obviously, that doctor was no longer over that EMS system. We had to go to Saint Elizabeth out of Ottawa for our resource hospital, which mandated them to take a test on those protocols in order to belong to that system. We had four, um, employees who took a lot of time, choose not to go through that headache, and, and they left the service.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, and additionally, since we have these, these very long transport times now, we're doing station backfill every time that ambulance leaves, leaves the station. So that's about a two-and-a-half hour turnaround from, from start to finish. So during that two-and-a-half hours, we're having people come in to fill, to make sure we have an ambulance available for the, the town if, if it's needed during that two-and-a-half hours. So it's really crippled our, um, our staffing, and Kathy is picking up the slack, and she wants to go on vacation then this month, and I want her to, because she can't continue to do this. So I really think we, we owe it to them to take this seriously and, and help them out any way we can. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I was aware of the backfill issue because of the amount of time extra that we'd have to do. I, I was not aware that, that we were, uh, that we couldn't utilize all of our personnel because of a different qualification.
We lost four. We lost four very active employees.
Yeah, I even see that, for whatever reason, it was approved back then, we actually had a different name instead. We actually, it's Ron Paparella and Dean Harper, and then one other. So it looks like that, that individual is one of the people that left or something, I assume?
Yeah, he, he still takes time, but he's just not one of the IMRF employees. I believe he's one that she might wanna make an IMRF employee, because he's encroaching on, uh, we have a lot of people who are encroaching on that thousand hours, so she's not able to use them the way the ordinance is written, because she doesn't have that flexibility.
I wonder if there's a new one that's come out since then, because his name's actually in this one.
Dean Harper?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and my, my vision is to restructure, let me find it here. Ordinance number one-one-two-four-dash-zero-nine-eight-two-zero. I don't even, I think it's, it's kind of silly that we're using names in, in these ordinances, because it puts a handcuffs on us if somebody leaves. So what I'd like to do is strike, as you can see here, strike all this language. I don't have it, I don't know if I have it here, as I think I do in that packet.
It's in one of them, yeah.
I'd like to strike all that language and say six, I'd like to go from three to six IMRF employees to keep our ambulance staff. And say six ambulance service employees will be allowed to work up to one thousand eight hundred hours in a calendar year. And, and if they work in excess of one thousand hours, will be eligible for IMRF benefits, but shall remain part-time employees, and that be eligible for any other benefit other than IMRF. And then I just want to go to all other Oglesby ambulance service employees, shall be part-time employees, and shall not work more than nine hundred and ninety-five hours in a calendar year. I think that accomplishes what we needed to do.
The, the funny thing is, I would say, oh, apparently you gotta put the names in there, but if you look at the one that was approved, it had two names and one other, like floater essentially.
Right.
So that's a great point. If you can already put the one floater in there, why not just make them all six?
That's, why, why name them?
Why handcuffs them?
Because there's so much turnover in that field. If we have somebody who's part-time with us, and then they get, they become a full-time firefighter, they're not gonna stay here. They're gonna go where the money is. So I mean, we're gonna have turnover in, in this department, based on our structure right now.
How about, how about, what about this for an idea? So we, we try to pay homage to the shall and, and use our, our board and everything like that. Why don't we do the idea that we try to get them together in the next week, for, for the ambulance board? See if they can meet, we can prepare this, this ordinance for them, have them review, see if they come up with a different recommendation or other concern, because I know there's...
Do we have to do that? Is there, is there a shall, or is this...
Well, I haven't seen the shall, but where's the shall?
I copied, I copied and pasted. It was on...
It was in an ordinance?
It was in the ordinance of where we established in twenty twenty-one.
I just don't believe that an, that an advisory board can stop action at the council level, and if it is, it's silly.
I'd like to be recognized at some point, because I can speak to this too. I do it for a living.
Sure.
Um, I, I, I work on an ambulance as, as a full-time firefighter, paramedic. It's no secret. Everybody knows I do that for a living. I work at a professional career department where it's all full-time people, and our single biggest problem is employee retention and bringing people on. We, we, we give a test, and we exhaust the whole list maybe a couple months after the testing process is over. What Commissioner Eunice is speaking to can determine if you're gonna get an ambulance at, at your house in a timely fashion or not. I'm all for the boards, and I, and I do respect the advisory part of it. I sat on the ambulance board prior to being elected, so I was part of this conversation leading up to this. But I do respect what he's saying, because we owe it to the residents that if we're talking about something that, you know, as you say, cliche-wise is life or death. I mean, this is an ambulance. I would, I wouldn't want anybody in this room or anybody in this community to be denied timely response, because we're going through these motions of sending it to an advisory board. So that, that's my position on it, and I, and I feel it's something that, it's, it's not just about going through the motions. I think we're gonna have tough decisions up here as the time comes forward.
I just don't want to have to explain to somebody why an ambulance never showed up, and that would break my heart.
What works somebody beyond a hundred and something hours?
A hundred and ninety-eight hours and eighty, eighty hours, two-week period, which is, not only is it not safe, it's really unethical. It really is.
It's unconscionable.
It's unreasonable.
Why don't we do both?
It's immoral.
Why don't we do both? I see that you already have some language in here that could possibly, I think, work, like, like the things that you showed that you struck out. Do you have this in your packet?
I, I don't get a packet, so...
This is the one that you made the changes to, to get those modifications done.
I just took a lot of fluff out of it, is all I did.
And the specific names. So what I'm wondering is if we could put together that ordinance to, to be ready to adopt, but in the meantime, but in the meantime, we also...
You can have them meet.
Yeah, I mean, we have two weeks before the next meeting, right? It's two weeks.
That would, two birds, one stone, in my opinion.
Yep, and if they...
I think that's the fastest we can move on in any way, Terry.
And if they...
Well, it's not gonna happen this meeting.
Yeah.
And if they can't meet, we've made the opportunity to, to try to have them come together and then talk about some of these issues, because I don't think they've met yet as, as our new, as our new council yet, so...
They haven't.
So giving them that opportunity, and then either way, we, we're now presenting them with something. They can give their chops on it, uh, make sure there's no issues with it for any last modifications or, or something, um, and then we'd be ready to adopt the next meeting.
Okay. Can I take this, Jason?
Uh, you can. So if we want to do that, you want to make a motion to, to not only draft an ordinance, but then to also see if we can forward that to the, uh, the ambulance board as well?
Make a motion, we have our attorney draft the ordinance that we just spoke about, and also pass it to the ambulance board to get their recommendation on it, if they're able to meet before the next meeting. But if they don't have the opportunity to meet, I still want to take action at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Oliver?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McKernan?
Aye.
Steph Nolling?
Aye.
Hern?
Aye.
Number sixteen is old business. I don't have any listed table items here. Um, I will say, I, I'm not sure if we are going to want to continue doing our working meetings. I think there was great value in that. If, if we don't want to do working meetings anymore, where we're discussing a wide range of topics. Uh, at some point in time, though, there's, there's other items from those, uh, those working meetings that we haven't addressed back again. I've had residents come in to, to talk to me about them. So at some point, either we should have working meetings again, or, or we need to bring them back to our regular meeting in that section. Does anybody have any input on that either way?
I, I think we're perfectly capable of doing stuff during these regular meetings. I'm looking at meeting minutes from, uh, our last working meeting, and, and it was said that, noting that working meetings aren't typically used to take action on matters unless in an emergency. And I feel like we have an obligation up here that if something comes up and we're all in agreement, or, or, or even if there's a, a group majority, that we should be able to take action. So I'm not opposed to having discussion on it, but I, I just think if, if these working meetings are for open discussion and there's no room to take action on matters, we're just having coffee talk at that point. That's, that's my two cents.
I, I kind of think they should be the exception and not the rule. I, I understand there's gonna be times where we have to have them, but I, I definitely don't think we have to have them monthly or necessarily even quarterly. I think they're kind of dependent upon what we have happening within the city and for big ticket, big-ticket items, if you will, to discuss.
Your thoughts?
I agree with Terry. We need, you know, randomly, every once in a while, we're gonna have to have a working meeting, but I don't think we need them all the time.
So you guys with the idea that, for like maybe next meeting, we'll start adding some of those other items that we haven't talked about in a while and bring them back into that section then? Okay? Anybody else have any other table items or any old business? Okay, number seventeen, new business. Got one item here of how items are placed on the council meeting agenda. Anybody wanna start off talking about that?
Yeah, I'll take that. So there's been a lot of discussion between the mayor and the commissioners about who should be allowed to add items to the agenda. It keeps falling back on Robert's Rules of Order, and I think we have different interpretations, at least the mayor and at least a few of us commissioners, as to how it's, it's supposed to be. I just want to read this for the record and place it into the record. This is straight from Robert's Rules of, of Order off their website, and it says, "How can I get an item on the agenda for a meeting? For a proposed agenda to become the official agenda for a meeting, it must be adopted by the assembly at the outset of the meeting. At the time that an agenda is presented for adoption, it is in order for any member to move to amend the proposed agenda by adding any item that the member desires to add, or by proposing any other change." This is where the important part is. "It is wrong to assume, as many do, that the president or mayor sets the agenda. It is common for the president to prepare a proposed agenda, but that becomes binding only if it is adopted by the full assembly, perhaps after amendments as just described." The problem I have with this is that it doesn't really apply to us, because we have to have our agenda ready forty-eight hours before. So I don't think it's fair, and I don't think it's the way that it was supposed, I don't think that's how it was intended.
Yeah, that all was established before the Opens Meetings Act was enacted in Illinois, and that's what ties your hands, because you have to settle an agenda and have it published forty-eight hours before the meeting.
Go ahead, please.
I, I'd, I'd like to take it a step further. Because of the forty-eight-hour rule, the way that our practice has been is that, okay, the Wednesday before our Monday meeting, if everybody could turn something in to Becky as to what they want or desire to see on the agenda, it gives her time to put the packets together and get everything assembled, gives the mayor time to figure out what has to go in the closed session, or what the order should be with it. So my feeling is, is that if we send the email requesting that, this should not be something that should be denied. I, I think, and, and if you have multiple commissioners saying they want to discuss the same thing, I think that's where the problem lies, is that how is one person? I, I understand he's the chair, I respect the position, but how can one person shut down something that three commissioners want to talk about? One man, just like, just like the attorney conversation that we had in our last meeting, one man should not be the gatekeeper to the agenda. If people want to put things on there, why should we not discuss them? I think this is open and honest government and transparency one oh one, as far as I'm concerned.
After discussion, I will be making a motion that we added a municipal code that any, anybody on the council can add any item, um, to the agenda going forward. So that's, that's what I'll be pushing to approve.
So with that being said, that's why I put in the new section of new business. If you look in our ordinances, it gives a sample template. I don't know how far back that goes, but it gives a sample, it looks very similar to what we currently have, but there is an item there that was called new business, and we never had it on before. So I put that there, and everything that anybody's ever requested, even though I've disagreed with it, has gone on the agenda. It's just gone on that. The only thing that has not happened was when people had a wording of something specifically, that I changed the wording, because it had political wording in it. So that's what I didn't allow to go on the agenda. But anything that anybody's requested that's gone on the agenda, it has gone on every agenda. Is that incorrect?
Well, Jason, I'd like to quote you from one of your emails to me...
Sure.
That you said, and I quote, "Either way, we'll get this one particular item on the, adding IMRF employees to the ambulance service on the agenda you are concerned with. Now that you explained to me that you aren't necessarily looking for any kind of final action at Monday's meeting." I had three items that I wanted to put on the agenda. You did ultimately allow them on there.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, with your email to me, you were almost chastising me, telling me you let my one item on this agenda. Now that I explained it to you and that you agree that it's gonna go to the ambulance board and that we're not, and I had to basically plead with you to get you to accept that.
I don't think of it like that.
Well, I do.
Okay. I don't think I was chastising anybody. What I was, because one of my concern was, is people are wanting to put things on the agenda to get final adoption at the very first meeting that, that's being brought up. And that's one of the things that I, I feel I have an obligation to prevent that from happening.
Well, I, I, I think we all have an obligation to take action when action is due, and that's why we're up here discussing things. If you want to carry it out over several meetings, that's, that's your one personal choice. If this council decides that we need to take action on something, that's what we're here for, and I, and I, I agree with Commissioner Eunice on this. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have ample discussion, but there's no reason to start dragging things out for the purposes of dragging them out.
So I'm not against any kind of discussion. I, I think you realize that. I, I have no problem talking about a subject if that's whatever, whatever it is. The, the concern I had was, in the original wording you had of it, was the, uh, the adding, you just wanted to approve something with IMRF. And I didn't think you, you knew that there was a previous ordinance in the past, that, that we had to actually adopt to do that. Same thing with the, uh, with what the ambulance board said in our ordinance. That's what I was referring to, that, to make sure. Now that you agreed that, yeah, we're not gonna do a final adoption of something, we're gonna bring it up, that's where...
That's not how, we, we always have to send it to the attorney anyway, Jason, so that's where I count on his expertise and not your legal interpretation, for him to give us that at a meeting. Because last I checked, it takes a law degree to give that opinion, a legal opinion. So that's where I think we need to discuss these matters at the council, and then as long as we have the council here and we have a quorum, there's no reason that a vote can't be taken. There's no reason to prolong anything ever going on the agenda, because we can discuss it as a full council, and the majority vote wins. That, that's a democracy.
The way you're phrasing it, yeah, I have no problem with that. The, the concern I have, well, I'll give you an example. The noise ordinance petition. The first meeting that the noise ordinance petition came out, you guys wanted to adopt it that night, right? That was my example of that, that we didn't have the wording for the ordinance yet, the, the public didn't have an opportunity to come and talk if there was any concerns, and there wasn't, which was great. But my, my thing is, I, I think it's dangerous that you first bring something that has a, a factor on affecting the public to a meeting, and you want to adopt it right there. That's why I, I'm not a fan of, of having the wording to be so... The last four years, it either said approve or discuss, and those are the items that we actually did. And I want to say before that, there was a lot of place-on-file type of things before we did final adoption and final approval. I'm not a fan of just having it, basic wording, and then somebody comes in and says, well, because it's on there, we're gonna, I first brought up the topic that we're gonna do this change in the city, and we're gonna adopt it the same night. That's what I'm concerned with. I mean, if there's an emergency, absolutely. The way you're, the way you're describing it is if there's an action we have to do, like, for example, if there was a shortage to where you were gonna be short for, uh, um, your ambulance, and we needed to make that happen tonight to make sure the op... We're gonna sit here and we're gonna go into, we'll recess, we'll write, we'll draft up a hand version of the ordinance if we need to, and we'll make it happen, right? But...
I don't know if, is that something doable, Pat? I've never seen that. I'm just saying, I admire, I admire the work ethic behind it, but I don't know the best.
What I'm saying is if something was so emergent, we've done that before. I think we've done that in, uh, IVRD, we had something we had to approve due to a safety issue.
There's a lot of actions that don't even require an ordinance. I mean, they can just take council approval, and you could certainly do those things in an emergency. Some of those came up during COVID, honestly.
The point I'm making is, there's nothing that somebody's ever brought up that wanted to be on the agenda that was not allowed on the agenda. I put it either under new business, I did change the wording of the political one, though, where I didn't allow that to go through like that, because it should just be general.
I, I think if there's something like that that comes up on the agenda, we're all grown-ups here, where you can talk to the person who, who asked for it, you two work it out, and as long as what they're asking for gets placed on the agenda for discussion, and in a position where if we decide we want to go a certain route with it, I think that's, that's the appropriate method.
But isn't that what happened?
Well, it is what happened, but what you're saying is, is you want this to go over several meetings where we have extended discussion. And what I'm trying to say is that some of these things, for some of us are black and white, and for you, it's just something that requires endless discussion. And I think at this point, each person should be recognized, each person should have the ability to come up here and speak their piece, and, and, and lay their cases on the merits, and then after the fact, we proceed. I think this, this dancing from meeting to meeting to meeting is not conducive to getting anything done. I think it's a disservice to the residents, and from what I understand from our practice and the way that our attorney drafts the ordinances, he's not drafting anything until we're up here telling him what we want him to draft, and seeing a vote or council action on it. Am I correct with that, Pat?
That's correct.
So that's what, that's what my point is.
I need direction, Tony. I need direction.
That's my point, is that I just don't feel like we need to go on for months on end discussing the same thing, when we can discuss it, lay our case on the table, see where it ends up, take an up or down vote on it, and we move on with our lives.
And Jason, I know you're not a fan of discuss and possibly act, and let me explain to you why, why I do it that way. It's because, if you recall, at a working meeting we had, we had discuss an item, and you made the, the statement that we couldn't take action on it, because it didn't say discuss and possibly act. So that is why, after having that, you know, setback, that I always put my, my points as discuss and possibly act, because I don't want it to be prolonged unnecessarily.
So I, I think the one you're talking, is it, is it the noise ordinance? That's what you're talking about?
That's, that's where you had made the statement, yeah.
That's, that's what had me concerned, because I, and I do think, and I, I think I have an obligation, and maybe, you know, people don't agree with that. I think I have an obligation as mayor to make sure that the public has an opportunity to respond to things that could be, I mean, nobody, nobody had an issue with it, but what if you had? What, what if you would have had, because what, there was like ten signatures on the petition? What if there's twenty signatures on a petition saying they don't want it? Do you recognize those people at all?
I feel that's what the forty-eight-hour advance notice is for. It's to give those people that time to come here and discuss something about it.
But they don't know what's on the agenda, like, for example, the one that was last...
They have forty-eight hours, correct?
The one that was on, what, to get a petition together, to say something against it?
If it's, if it's on our agenda, it's gotta be printed forty-eight hours in advance, correct?
Two weeks ago, the one that was ordinance, whatever this was, chapter two-point-oh-three council, members of this board refused to tell me what it was about.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I, I believe that I, I have email correspondence here that I'm happy to submit into the record, that said that after your July eleventh email about that nobody's gonna take any action or discuss anything with the attorney unless going through you, and then you wanted to discuss further and further, and I said, no, we're gonna discuss this openly in public session now. That's where that all came about, and I'm happy to submit any of my email correspondence as a result of it. So I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be labeled or categorized as a liar or somebody up here that's telling a story. There's proof of that, and that's where it came from. The next day was when I asked to have that put on the, uh, the agenda.
You should forward that then.
I'm happy to provide it for the record.
Okay. So that's my two cents with it. I, I mean, again, I'll, I'll restate it again, there's nothing that's ever been denied, there's nothing that's ever been denied to go on the agenda. Uh, the only thing that's been denied is some of the specific wording, but I, again, I'm not afraid of talking about a topic. I am a little bit afraid of approving something that affects residents or, or taxpayers' money, that residents have not had an opportunity to hear anything about or comment on.
It's almost like you're insinuating that we're incompetent or trying to do that to them.
No, not at all.
Well, I don't know who you're protecting, then. If, if you're sure that our council isn't gonna do that, and we're not at all doing that, why do you keep saying, like, we're pulling something off on you, against the taxpayers? And I don't, I, I take that as an insult.
Well, the people voted us in here for a reason, and we have an obligation to serve them, and I just don't feel like this is conducive to getting business done. So with that, I'll make a motion that we add to the municipal code that any council member can add items to the agenda.
So in any word format? Because that was the other problem.
I think we, I think like Tony said, we, we have a discussion like adults, and we figure out what will be the best wording if you have an issue with it. However, I will not give you veto power on it.
So if somebody wants to put political wording into the agenda... So if somebody wants to put political wording into the agenda that goes into our official agenda, that flies then?
Well, do you really think we're going to do that, Jason?
It already was.
So it had to be changed to parking spot. Nonetheless, I think the ultimate thing that's most important here is that the item get discussed and that it's worded on the agenda so that if there is some action that needs to be taken or a route that we need to go, that we're allowed to do that. This council does not want to be handcuffed. I speak for myself right now. I do not want to be handcuffed and not being able to put something on the agenda.
And again, I'm not trying to attack anybody here, but since you brought it up, I mean, there was another action that somebody took to instruct the attorney to draft the ordinance to go back to the old appointing authority of that and get that on the next agenda that nobody knew about anything at the council here.
In all fairness, he said it during the executive session.
He said during executive session.
And that's why I brought up the audio. And now again, I'll speak to that if I have the floor at this point.
Sure, please.
I think that's what precipitated a lot of this. I know that in that meeting, I got somewhat heated and passionate about my position, and I stand on my own two feet about everything that I said in that. And I'm more than willing to let that audio out. I will be a yes vote when it comes up, if it comes up that we want to do that, because I stand by everything I said and the positions that I took. And I think that's just the best way moving forward because then at this point, we don't have to dance around it about he said, she said. It is what it is. So, you know, I take, I take full responsibility about, you know, becoming passionate at a certain point in the exchange. I use an expletive. I don't, I don't think it'd be professional in an open session, but I have no problem with it. I stand on my own two feet about everything that I said in that meeting and the positions that I took.
Okay.
Mayor, do we have a motion on the floor?
I believe, remind me again so everybody understands exactly what the motion is.
I'd like to make a motion that we place it in the municipal code that any council member can add an item to the agenda for a meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on it?
Are we talking about clarification? Once you bring it up, is there room for discussion on clarification on how it should be written on the agenda?
Well, I think once Pat prepares it for the next meeting, we'll see that in our packets, Mac, and then we'll approve it. So what we're doing is, I'm making a motion, we do that, but Pat has to draft the ordinance or the municipal code language. We'll see that before the next meeting, and then it will be approved at that point.
Was your question on that or is it the wording of the actual agenda items?
The wording of the actual agenda being put on.
Of the what?
Okay, you got the agenda. You put something on the agenda. The wording is conflictable, okay? That's probably not the right word I'm trying to say. But there's open for discussion on what it should be written, or you want to add that to this or no?
Well, I think that that's where we're all adults and that we need to be able to communicate. And if somebody sees an issue with how something's worded, I don't think that any of us at this table are going to be resistant to.
Correct.
It's about getting our items on the agenda, not the exact language, and I think we can be flexible as it pertains to that.
Okay, so we're also voting on that as well.
Well, no, that's not my motion, Mac. My motion is that any council member can add an item to the agenda. That's what my motion is to add to municipal code.
My only point of information on that is, are you also saying that that's ever been denied by anybody on this council yet at all?
Well, it won't be after we pass this, Jason.
But has it been denied?
I'm not saying that it has.
It's been unduly held up.
You have, just by that one thing you sent me in an email that I just quoted you, that was pretty contentious, Jason, it really was. And it was almost you posturing, in my opinion, in threatening me that my items will not go on the agenda. So that's why I feel it necessary to move this forward.
Okay. All right. Does everybody understand the motion? Any questions, concerns over that? Okay. Roll call, please.
Paul.
Aye.
Yudis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stephanelli.
Aye.
Abstain. Okay. Any questions on that about what to put up on?
No, I put Terry's motion in quotes. I think I know what he said.
I would recommend the place to put that would be the same place that talks about how we will use Roberts Rules of Order unless specified by law, because that's where it gets, that's where it gets specified.
Sometimes I just let the codifiers decide where to put them to.
Okay. Next thing I have is public comments over any topic.
I guess I got two things now. What you, right side. Is that on?
On?
Yep. On what you just passed, placing something on the agenda? I don't have a problem with that, but if it gets to the point where placing something on the agenda and passing an ordinance that a commissioner writes, I, so that's in the wording that you're kind of, what's the wording supposed to be in this situation? Putting it on the agenda, that's just fine. As long as it kind of states it, it's just, Tony wants to put, talk about something in new business, and I guess that's even cool, but having it pass into a, an ordinance?
It has to go to him first.
I agree, okay.
So all we're doing is putting on the agenda to pass to Pat so that he can draft an ordinance and we can move it forward at that next meeting.
Okay.
That's intention.
I kind of, I think that's cool. I'm not sure you can address this, but Terry, the four employees on the ambulance that didn't want to take a test that they understand things in the OSF system.
That's correct.
Are they, employees, is that a volunteer firefighter, EMT? So this is the EMTs that their full-time gig did not want to do it, they're part-time, they're?
Let me explain to you the staffing at the ambulance service so that you understand it, Greg. So we are staffed with one full-time employee, which is our director, Kathy Edens. All the rest of the employees are paid. We don't have any volunteers within the Oglesby Ambulance Service. They're all paid a part-time wage. So the only place we have paid on-call employees, which might be closer to like a volunteer is what you're referring to, is in the fire department, but they're still paid per call. We don't have any true volunteer employees, to my knowledge, within my departments.
Okay. So are those EMTs basics, they're paramedics?
I can't answer that. I just know Kathy told me she lost four. It severely impacted her ability to staff the ambulance, and just, there's such a shortage right now, and it's everywhere. And she put, I didn't mention this earlier, I was going to bring it up. We did put an ad in the paper, you know, a while back. We got zero applicants after running a 300-hour ad in the News Tribune to bring in new EMTs. It's a shortage area-wide. It's not unique to Oglesby, Illinois.
So those four employees, is there a part-time gig for them? They work somewhere else at full-time?
I don't know whether they work somewhere else or not, Greg, most likely.
Okay.
But yeah, that's our model. We're just staffed with part-timers that rely on them to take all of our.
I was an EMT and I got tasked with being the scheduler, and I got up to here with it, too.
Oh, yeah. I don't know how Kathy does it. And us working her $188 in a two-week period is crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right. With that being said, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I guess I should have been in line. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's what my comment is today. There's a few of these meetings where we can hear audio wonderfully on the live edition. And then there's some of these meetings where the audio is non-existent, so I don't know. You guys are really comfortable with the mics, and I think maybe it's just, like, for example, the last planning and commission meeting, half of that audio was unintelligent. Like, I don't know what went on in most of that meeting.
I have something to admit. I think, I think we realized halfway through the meeting that the amplifier wasn't turned on. Was it the first half that you didn't hear anything and you heard something the last half?
No, it's kind of consistent for a lot of different meetings, and I think it just has to do with people's lack of familiarity with the microphone. So maybe if we could start with new people, a little gentle reminder to address into the microphone so that it's picked up on the live feed. Hi, Mom. Sorry, I felt like we need a little comic relief there. And the second thing I would like to address, but I don't know if it's going to be, because I thought I heard mention of the infamous Facebook post. I would like to kind of bring that up. I feel that it's really one-sided, Jason, that when you get to make a Facebook post calling out other people on this council, and maybe not specifically calling them out, but we're discussing things that I feel would be better suited to this forum where there are rules in place and structures to be kept. I just, I felt that was really outside of professional.
Okay.
So I wanted to say my piece on that.
Thanks. Well, I will say that the conversation got closed early at our last meeting, so I didn't get to finish all my points with that as well. And it was on a separate night, so, but thank you for your comments. Okay, Commissioner updates. Commissioner Stephanelli.
In the next meeting or two, I'm hoping that all of us can come back with our recommendations and what went well, our critique of Summer Fun Fest. I'm also looking at switching us from paper packets to go into an electronic format that's going to make life easier on the clerk greatly. It'll help us out with the technology part of it, because now instead of buying paper, printing this stuff up, after the meeting, going and shredding it, it's going to save us money. There's an upfront cost, obviously, for the device, but in the long term, it's going to save the city some money. So I'm looking into that. I'll come back at the next meeting or two and report back on that. That's all I have for the moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Yudis.
I have a couple of things, Mayor. Reminder to everyone that First Responder Night is tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Oglesby Pool. Not only will all the fire trucks and ambulances and police cars be there, but we'll also have free swimming, hot dogs, a duck take, and a bounce house, among other things. Secondly, I have a thank you card from Beverly Suns, and I'm going to read it, what she wrote. "To the team who supported my family on July 22nd at 107 West Porter Street, there just aren't enough words to explain my gratefulness to you. Your compassion and professionalism were above and beyond anything we could have asked for. The dignity and respect you showed my husband and the sensitivity and care you showed to me and my family speaks volumes on the pride and dedication you have to your jobs. We are so grateful for the strength you provided at this most difficult time in our lives. The strength of your character, your commitment to care, and dedication to those who serve will never be forgotten. Thank you again for helping our family through this most challenging time. Most sincerely, Bev Suns and entire Carl Suns family, Chris and Trish Karine," I believe is what it's signed here. I'd like to recognize the people who were on that response. For the ambulance service, it was Kathy Edens, Dusty Shan, Kelly Shan, Tim Plack, and Kendra Arges. And for the police department, it was Wesley Boudak and Scott Nuptal. So I just can't say enough good things. I love getting notes like this, and I'm so proud of my staff, and I think they deserve a big kudos. So not only should that, she also gave me $10 gift cards for the root beer stand to give to everybody who was a part of that. So she's just, she's just an incredible lady. For those who don't know, she lost her husband, and she was very thankful for everybody who was there, obviously, you know, after reading her letters. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much for that. Those are very kind words to hear. Thanks. Commissioner McDermott.
I would like to, I would like permission to ask for bids on the Clark Street sewer separation system. I believe we got the grant from the county grant.
Did that come through the?
We got a grant from the county. We're going to separate the sanitary storm sewer on Clark Street from Columbia to Kenosha.
Yes, sir.
The plans are almost done. We'd like to advertise for this.
I thought we were still waiting on some kind of environmental thing from the?
No, I don't. Clark Street box culvert.
The box culverts, the Safe Around the School program? I thought there was three things that we're waiting for, culture studies or something like that.
No.
Okay.
That's a good deal.
Wish you would have told me, we would have put that on the agenda.
Well, you got to let Jim finish his plans first.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when do you want to go out for bid for that?
Well, I'd like to try and go out as soon as possible.
Do we have bid stuff ready for bid specs and everything?
We should have stuff ready this week. So we can, you can be patient at the next one, and they'll have the bids ready to approve and place the file for the next one.
You mean to go out for bid?
To go out for bid.
Yeah. So we'll just, why don't we just put that on the agenda next, we'll go out for bid at the next?
If that's okay.
Yeah.
But I think that's, that's great, you know, it's a grant.
Even, I will say, even before we approve, whatever's going to get approved, if you want something like that to go on the agenda, that's not a problem. You won't get any resistance from putting that on there.
I just got to make sure it's written right there. Correct?
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Baldridge.
Yeah, I'd like to commend our electric department for their efforts on the night of July 29th and July 30th. Some of you are aware, there was a storm that came through our area, and unfortunately, it hit our Malik Station, causing multiple points of damage and an outage on the west side of town. Our crew was notified just after 10:00 p.m. Friday night and worked nonstop until 4:30 p.m. Saturday afternoon. One thing after another was found to be damaged, but they kept going that whole time. That is something to be proud of. I know it's frustrating when you lose power and it's down for long periods of time. They all understand that as well and do everything they can to get it back up and running as soon as possible. Sometimes it's not just a fuse or a simple fix like this time. New parts have been installed and it's all back to normal out there. They did a great job and Oglesby thanks you. With that being said, it was even more evident that we needed another worker now. Bringing their crew to four, we've now hired Austin Osopinski. We thank him for applying and taking the job. He was the best qualified candidate, and we look forward to having him here for a long time with the rest of our crew. And the dog, the dog run opened last Thursday. It's very large and beautiful. It's great to see a space that wasn't even being used and enjoyed now. Wes Black has been working very hard on the disc golf course, and it's really nice to see the progress. The baskets and everything needed to, everything needed to have been ordered already should be arriving soon. There's still much to do, but you're able to see a bit more of his vision now, and it is beautiful. I'm positive it'll draw in people from near and far away just to take a look at its beauty. Thanks, Wes. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I think you had.
I just want to say, I think that golf park is absolutely amazing. I think we did a great job, and I think it's going to bring people to Oglesby to take advantage of it, so.
Thank you. Thanks. I think we have one more, by the way.
Yeah, I was, I was also, during the power outage, Commissioner Baldridge had called me to come take a ride down and just kind of see what was going on with them, and, man, I give our electrical guys a lot of credit. It was a hot day, they were up for hours on end, did a lot of hard work, and, boy, I never realized as a resident the kind of work that they do, so, and I commend Commissioner Baldridge. He bought them all lunch that day. I brought them Gatorades after my wife yelled at me. But I really, I'm totally impressed, and I think that's exactly what I'd like for the residents to see, is that these commissioners are hands-on with our departments, and I think that's where a lot of this back and forth is coming from. Finally, I'm just going to leave it with this. I had a lot of sentiments I wanted to share, but with the Facebook post, I think any of